We're back. We opened the meeting and then went immediately into executive session. Now we're back and it is 6:26 and I will give a little disclaimer, this meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Meeting Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record.
Would you like Tamara to get a laptop?
Do you have a laptop in your bar? That'd be fantastic. Thank you Tara.
A couple minutes before maybe go over a couple other things?
Or we can, she can just do a little presentation before we get the laptop set up or is it like a package deal? Can you just talk about the program first?
Sure, I can.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we've been looking at various...
Want to grab the microphone?
Sure.
Okay.
In the assessors office and 14 other assessors offices in Plymouth County here have been looking at a flyover which I brought before the board a couple of months ago and money, funds were allocated for that flyover. Well, since that flyover, I've been speaking with assessors in other communities in really testing out the websites. And the flyover that I presented earlier would have images top-down, so you'd be looking at the roof of a building. And this program that I'm going to show you tonight is pictometry. It's an oblique image and it allows the user to look at it from all four points of the compass so they can switch it all the way around. It's not just a top-down, it's actually looking at the structure from about maybe a 45-degree angle and the ability to, as I said, look at it from various directions, which I believe offers much more valuable information for the user. So I had asked Bob and Tom, and Tom had attended a meeting on people GIS and seen the aerial view which we had, you know, is the other option. And he agreed that the aerial view is limited. So, because he's a selectman in Halifax, he attended a presentation for three towns last week. So I'd like to tonight present this pictometry which is the oblique. Now to backfill here, in 2010 pictometry was installed on Bob Carling's laptop, desktop, and the desktop in the assessors office. So I still have those images with the parcel shapes from that period of time. And Bob uses that frequently. Now he also uses Mass GIS Oliver, which doesn't have the same capability this does, you know, but it can serve a purpose. Now pictometry is available, we would have five organizations or departments, committees, and then under that sub-users, so we could have, you know, 10 sub-users if necessary per department. So everyone could log in. And the beauty of it is like Conservation Commission, Planning Boards, Zoning Board of Appeals could log in during a meeting and pull up the parcel in question and zoom in quite close. It's really great clarity of it. And, you know, evaluate online. Or they could appear ahead of time and you can capture images and download them, you could print them, you know, you could include them in emails, all of that. So I believe that, you know, it's a value to all of the permitting groups within the town, as well as the police could have it on their laptops in the cruiser. So if they had a call, you know, and it was down a long driveway or at night or something in a storm, they'd be able to bring that up and see it right in the cruiser. And the same if the fire department had, you know, online capability or cloud capabilities. But also for, and I just learned today in my first demo with them, I've uploaded all of our files. And it was really, you know, very easy for me to do. I took all the files from our mapping company and uploaded them and, you know, I'm sure there's much more, you know, I can do than just what I have so far. But I think it would be, you know, certainly interesting. And the pricing is higher than the other one, but it can be paid over three years. So, you know, that is of value. And there's an annual maintenance fee as we would all expect. And this would link, has the capability to link in with other platforms. And also it has, would offer the, because of the grant that we received this year from SGIS, we will now have all the parcel dimensions on our parcels. So, you know, when the boards look at it, they will have the parcel dimensions. And this has a measure tool too. So from the house online, you could actually use the measure tool and measure the distance from the structure to the property line, other types of capabilities that, you know, I think would be very important. There are quite a number of communities that use this and the aerial GIS. But, you know, I'm not recommending that we do both. I think this would be, you know, of greater value. But like the town of Concord has both, Matipoiset has both. But they have, you know, in-house GIS departments and they're looking for, you know, sewer lines and, you know, other capable, you know, tracking other issues that we don't. But we're also starting to capture all the easements in the assessors office. So, you know, we've been adding functionality. This year we added, you know, quite a considerable amount of new functionality. And the maps will be printed. I think they'll be available tomorrow. And we ordered...
No, I have a couple of questions, but only when they're done.
Okay.
Where do you want this issued to?
I want it connected to the internet.
I do, yes. I have to find the warrant. There we go.
I lost the connection.
Oh.
You're off the hook.
Do you have another one of the handouts?
Great, thank you.
And when John comes?
Perfect.
So while she's pulling that up, so you're comfortable that we have the fund, this is a little more expensive, but the funds are available?
Well, we have some funds from the technology grant that John has received and plus $9,500 that was approved in March, February, March?
For?
For the flyover.
That was the building, that was building and grounds.
Yeah, but I think we discussed that a few weeks ago and we think that is not available.
Well, there's a question, I mean, it's flying over the whole town is a little bit different than, you know, building and grounds are maybe the definition. You may have...
Of use of the article?
The accountant may have some issues on that if she wants to use it. But I think there's still, I think there's still, I think there's still enough money to do.
Well, you know, and the total of it is 19,900 over three years.
Okay, so it's 19,900 over three years. Equal payments?
I believe so.
Probably.
Okay.
Pricing of the two.
All right, so that'd be a little over six a year.
You cover that with grant money, probably with the excess grant money.
Well, did we ever hear from the DOR if that was an acceptable use of the IT grant?
It is IT-related.
Right, it is IT-related.
Because the software...
It's your software program.
Right, the software program. Okay.
It would fall into that one.
Okay.
All right, so we feel like we're okay there?
Yeah, I think we're okay there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think John was going to look to see if it was.
I think he was going to confirm that.
Confirm that it was. But the $9,100 that was from before, Barbara said it can't be used for that.
Okay, the 91 for buildings and maintenance. Okay, well, that makes sense.
And that was the discussion we had a few weeks ago, that we felt uncomfortable that would be okay. And here's John, thank goodness. Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to be with you.
So, yeah, Deb was going to start her, the presentation of the pictometry. We've already been going over the background of the program, that it was 19,900 over three years.
19,900 per year or...
Over three years. So we're looking at a little over 6,000 per year. Well, what, 60, no, okay, 20,000 over three years. So almost, not quite seven.
Plus some software maintenance stuff, so figure seven, 7,500.
Yeah, maybe seven.
And we had had the discussion a few weeks ago that originally it was thought that buildings and grounds might be a funding source, but we felt pretty uncomfortable with that. And so we were back to the IT grant, right, as a funding source?
Yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially.
There's a wrinkle in that. What are we going to talk about it at?
Okay. And there's no other articles that were voted at town meeting of grant money left for this type of purpose that we didn't use?
No, I didn't know that building and grounds money wouldn't be available.
Okay, so you haven't looked. Okay. Okay, well, we can check with Barbara to see if there's other IT, you know, money left for this type of thing where we might be able to apply some of that.
But the first thing that wouldn't be due until sometime after the first of the fiscal year.
Okay.
So we could, you know, it's not do this fiscal year, 17, it's doing 18.
Okay.
So, you know, Barbara could probably...
Well, that'd be July 1st.
Of 18?
Right, but the flyover won't be until next spring.
No, of 17, because that's fiscal 18.
Right.
So it's in fiscal 18?
Right, fiscal 18. And the flyover will be next spring.
Okay.
Because they go out before the trees leaf out.
Okay.
And Linda Letty came up and looked at it and said that, you know, I sent an email out to her board just in case anybody had any extra monies that they could allocate to us. So next year, you know, maybe each board could raise, you know...
Well, we should have done was put an article in for it.
Right, but I didn't know if they didn't have the money. When the selectmen voted that $9,500.
Vote for what?
For the flyover. This would be a flyover, but a different company, different time.
We didn't have a flyover.
No, no.
There never was an article for either, and there should have been. Either for pictometry or for the digital photo.
Right, and we never did either.
Well, they never got, they never got back to us on the other one. I mean, we asked them and they were going to come back to us and they never did. And I don't believe that project ever happens, so.
Okay, okay.
There was never a vote, I went back to look, Deb?
On the website?
No.
That we were just going to look at it?
The flyover.
Okay.
And that was at the 313. And they're just going to look to see, working with other towns and possibly applying for a regional grant you were going to look into.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't we go with the presentation and we may have to look for a funding source after, but yeah, it definitely sounds interesting.
Well, you could go to support it.
Right. And then we'll try to find, right, some money.
Okay. I saved the password on my, my system. I need my password now.
All right, well, that's all right. Well, I looked at it at home. It looked pretty interesting. Did you get a chance to look at it, Mark?
I did not look at it. But the punchline is you're feeling like there's a lot more information to be gotten for not a tremendously increased expense. Just a bigger question, just more philosophical. This is satellite telemetry and...
No, it's aerial photography.
So the legality, the privacy of individuals, all those issues have been...
It's 2017, you don't have any privacy anymore.
Yeah, hello.
Have been ironed out. I mean, you know, I could imagine people reading this and, you know, surveillance, search rate, seizure planning.
But it's just to capture images at one point in time, right? It's not like they're flying over every week.
It's like Google Earth.
Yeah.
And they capture it. Okay, so this is a picture of what, not with our...
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, it's really neat.
It's very, very cool. So if you were to take this to a ZBA hearing and you could look at it from, you know, eastward, north and south, you could measure from the distance between the house, our lot lines will be the parcel lines, the dimensions of the parcel would be available. So if you take this to any board meeting, you know, planning, zoning, conservation...
So this is all public records stuff?
It's all online now, yeah.
I mean, you can go into, what is it, Matipoiset, Marion?
Right.
There's other towns using it.
I'll go to Concord and I'll show you.
I'm sure they shook it down.
Yeah.
I can actually show you the difference on the Concord website. They have both.
Yeah, I went into Concord.
You did, yeah. Did you go over to the side?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It was very interesting stuff.
Did you see that guy in the corner that was smoking a pipe with...
I did, I did. Yeah, and then I saw the blue lights coming.
I'm sorry. No, it's beautiful technology and I see the utility of it. There is a bigger philosophical issue, but that's on a national...
That ship has sailed.
It's a national level and...
That was one of the boards, Mark, about 15 years ago.
Yeah? Give up on that?
If you go on Mass GIS or if you go to Google Earth and type in your own address, that comes up.
Or any address, any address you want to see.
I'm just an old-fashioned kind of guy.
Google Maps, you get a street view. You can drop right down, have a street view with anyone you want. And they've got a lot of them all over the world.
Yeah, they sure do.
We're just too, too small.
Which street view is? Plington is in street view.
But not walkable.
So what's the wrinkle?
Anything that's out there publicly.
John's going to share the wrinkle.
Okay.
So we got a grant. At the time of the grant, when, before we got the letter?
Right.
The background was they wanted to see the software for the town clerk go through.
Right.
Okay. And I was told that was basically what the 16,000 was predicated on, which was, I think the whole thing came to around 10, something like that, 12 for software. We got the letter and the letter said this is for public records. So we put in for 49,000, we got 16,000. We passed at town meeting the software, the exchange system, and the backup. The only two things we didn't go forward with were the projector screen presentation and the high-volume printer. So the question raised by myself and the accountant is, will the, can the grant be used for monies other than for things like this? Or does it have to be used within the confines of the original grant? So we're going to have to go back to the Department of Revenue, Zach Blake, and get a ruling.
Okay.
And see what he says. If in fact it's just what we, within the confines of what we submitted, we still got to use for the money. But it means that this would not be allowed out of the grant. We'd then have to take a look at where it would come from from other sources. And that's where we are, basically.
I wonder when the next round of IT grants will be?
I don't know that we'd be allowed in it after receiving one, because the first round we were in, we didn't get, they did not let the people who were...
We were invited, right.
Yeah, the people who got them were not invited in the second.
The first flyover we...
What other...
So this is the top-down.
I wonder what other grant money might be available for this type of...
That's what we got to look at.
Yeah, we need to look at that. It sounds like...
It seems to me the assessors could look for a grant within their purview.
But, you know, I wonder if this could even, like, public safety?
Sure.
With all the benefits that it provides with that, if there would be some grant money that we could use that for as well?
Because it is, it's an E911. As I said, type in the address and the geocodes there and that's how it's dispatched. And it could go out to the cruisers. But so can you see the difference?
Isn't it amazing?
It's amazing stuff.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Scary, but amazing.
And what we can do is because we have 2003 and 2008 data, when you have the most current, 2018, you can go back and look and see if buildings were there in 2008 and 2003. So you can actually look over time.
Neat.
Which is very cool.
Yeah, that's very cool.
You can't do that with this. But Concord updates every three years, so they can continually go back to look.
What happens if we don't make it this year? Is there another opportunity in a year?
Well, yeah, I mean, you could go to next year's town meeting and then do it in 2019.
Right, I mean, so they're doing this every year, they're doing the flyover?
Right.
Okay.
They could do it...
Have you looked at grants within the assessors' purview?
Not yet, no.
No, she said she hadn't because she thought that the money was going to be available from other sources.
I did have the grant this year for Mass GIS to update our maps and bring back all of the attributes that had been lost in 2009 and 2010. And they, and, you know, we have a senior workoff person at Otunok who has researched parcels on loan and all. And they've, all of his work has been included in the grant. So we came a long way this year with that one grant. But I missed the January deadline for the grant that three of the other towns applied for. All the other towns weren't able to go for that grant. But, you know, we can certainly look for that or see what money is available to be held over, you know, if there's any monies that are going to be carried forward. And see if there's like a third of it and, you know, go to town meeting for a third, a third, because you pay in three installments.
What are the three towns that are involved in the grant? It's a grant for this?
Well, they're looking at the other flyover, although Tom came in to look at this today.
Okay.
He's going to come up tonight to my office. Because, you know, he's seen this and watched Bob use it for a while. He thinks of the world a difference.
So if, just to follow up on that, so if we had to wait for town meeting, how much does that handcuff you between, if we had to delay?
It just puts the whole program off another year.
Just puts it off a year?
Yeah. Well, I have a 60-day live trial right now. That's why I said I uploaded all of our shape files and, you know, have created organizations. So all of the, you know, planning, zoning, border health, building, ZBA, and assessors. And I'll give the police department if that wants to try it too. So we do have, you know, it's less than 50 days available now because I just uploaded the files. So, you know, everybody could log in and test it and see what they think about it.
All right, you've got a little over a month and maybe in the meantime you can look for grant opportunities, we can look for grant opportunities. I know they spoke about this at an Old Colony Planning Council meeting that I, that I went to. I have one on Wednesday. I'll see if there's any money available from OCPC to help us get involved in this as well.
And it was through OCPC when they revised our maps that we went with pictometry initially.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll see if there's anything we can do through them.
Okay. But, you know, you do see the value, you know, having served on the boards?
Oh, I fully see the value. My sole concern really is the philosophical one, but that's long past and old-fashioned. But the funding thing's a real question. I think we have to find more than 6,000. We can't spend money in anticipation of town meetings to come. So that's the struggle here.
What's the fee, the annual fee on this?
You know what the annual fee? I think it's on my, I gave you my handle earlier, right? I think it's a thousand dollars annually.
It says maintenance 500.
Oh, 500 annually.
Yeah.
19,900, three-year payment, scheduled 500.
500.
Okay, so 500 annually. Okay. And 500 annually, okay.
So I thank you very much.
Thank you. It's very interesting. So, yeah, let us know how you make out. I'll let you know how we do with OCPC. And then, you know, if the chief likes it, there may be some grant money that he can apply for. And with several of us working on this, maybe we can make it happen.
Okay, that's great. And if Tom hears of anything else through Halifax, then I'm sure that he would bring it forward to us.
Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, good.
All right, well, I appreciate your time and your support.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And you're just going to verify with Zach about the use of that, the IT funds?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Are we going to put this on just like to wait another day or do we want to give her another day?
Why don't, well, why don't we just put it on the parking lot for now? Because we've got a little bit of research we need to do and look for grant money. And then maybe when things start to come together and we have some information, we can get together on it again.
Bring it forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, let's get into the agenda. Boards' goals for coming year, financial management. Do we have any updates?
The only, did you talk to Monica about doing the little update?
I did. I told her we wanted the full update. She said, fine. I told her, you know, if she needed contact information for, you know, we'd help or whatever we could to get the information. Bree sent the extension to Sean Cronin and Sean Powers, I think that was the other, there was two Seans, to get the extension. So we are all set. And so the financial policies are done. Aren't they done, the financial policies?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
Other than, you know, confirming those dates and things, which is relatively easy.
Right. Okay. And what we had decided with that was rather than adopt them right away, we were going to take them for a test ride for a year. Go through a budget cycle, make sure, you know, work out any kinks. If there's something that doesn't work for us, then we can modify it. And then look at us adopting it and finance committee adopting it. And then, you know, whatever the next step would be with the financial policies. Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
It did, correct.
Okay. All right, technology. Anything?
Well, we just had, just touching on this, this is obviously, you know, powerful tool. We have 20,500 in the computer maintenance account, but almost half of that goes right off to local computer store. So, you know, it doesn't leave us an awful lot if we go into this. So to the extent we can find other monies, that would be good. So technology, Maka and I went down, we saw the Dennett Elementary School screen, whiteboard I should say, with the projector and the computer. I don't know, you...
I think it was impressive. It seemed very cost-effective. I think it's going to make Mr. Trainor very happy. And so...
Next he's going to want a pointer.
It looked pretty exciting. We'll just, we'll end up with a lot of...
With your name out of here.
I think I will never use the PowerPoint, but drawing with different colors on the whiteboard will be great.
See, this is a man who takes, you know, it takes a positive attitude that he's never given a PowerPoint presentation.
Ever.
He has people that do that. All right. So what's the bottom line with it? How much does he think it's going to cost us for us to get into that?
So Steve Pello, who was the technology director for Silver Lake, put together some numbers and it came to about 4,300. Now, those were based on, just taking quote off the, you know, off the year. So I would assume that with a little negotiation, it would be four grand or maybe a little less. He suggested that we have ACHAS come in and just talk to us about how this would work. So I would suggest we do that and then we see where we go. We'd get some other bids. And he's, Steve is willing to put it together.
Terrific. Very good. Okay, all right.
So is that, is that the next step then?
Yeah, is...
Because I'd love to get going on it.
What would be the funding source for this? Would it be that computer?
Well, I'm hoping that it's the grant. In other words, if, if we go to Zach and he says, well, look, the idea was that even though you didn't get the full amount, we wanted to see you do those things.
Okay.
Then we would be able to use out of the 16,000, 4,000 for the tools.
Or whatever's left. And Tara does her thing and then maybe some money out of here.
Well, see, that's the thing. We've already got tariffs paid for through the articles at town meeting and the exchanges.
Oh, so that's just money now that's been earmarked.
So we have, so if Zach comes back and says, you can only use the 16,000 for the software...
Okay.
No, let's see. If he says the software and then you must use it for the, like, the exchange, then effectively what we would have to do is pay the exchange out of the grant and the monies that were approved at town meeting would just be held and then go... approved at town meeting would just be held and then go back into free cash. But I'm hoping he'll let us have more leeway. Because when we first got the grant, we weren't told that there were any restrictions. In fact, we were told quite the opposite.
Right. Okay.
So I got to clarify that.
All right.
And so we should wait on getting a estimate until we, until that gets clarified?
Well, we, I sent you the quotes, that's Steve.
Yeah.
So I would say, once we get that clarified, we have Steve come in and maybe with AUKAs and just lead us through.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, anything else on technology? That was a lot.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. All right, public safety?
Uh, public safety committee met last week, very brief meeting. Um, they think they're going to save a little money on clerk of the works and possibly save some money on architectural stuff that's already been done. Um, survey and site plan is going to be done this week or next week so they can start looking at site planning next meeting, July 19th. So it's moving along.
Excellent. All right. All right, grants. I don't think we've got anything new on grants, just that we're looking for them.
Though that presentation shows the power. We had a grant writer or somebody who could help us. You know, it's just...
Well, we'll, um, we'll explore some options and see if we can come up with something. Uh, anything on volunteerism?
Nothing right now. Sort of on the radar screen though.
Okay, all right. All right, so we've got an appointment at 7:00. Why don't we just move down the agenda? Fire clerk job description, review and vote to accept.
So you have it.
Yep.
Did you read it?
I did. Who wrote this?
No, uh, actually it was a police, uh, job description for Lou Ann, who they hired.
Yeah.
So what I did was take it and just modify it. So I would say 80% of it came from what Pat already had.
I, I think it's great. It is, it covers so much. Um, I just, there were a couple of things I was particularly drawn to. Here's the line, um, one of the duties, um, exercise of judgment and initiative particularly in situations not clearly defined by precedent or established procedures. It's like, my goodness, that's the line of lines for everyone.
Digging out.
As long as they don't hold the selectmen to that.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Love that. And the other one, ability to handle frequent interruptions and periodic crises.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
That's all Pat's.
So in any event, I looked at it and I had no problems with it and I totally support we moving ahead on, on that description.
I thought it looked good too.
Okay, great.
So make a motion that we approve a second.
Okay, the fire EMS department, Town of Plimpton, clerk of the fire, chief, job description.
Yes.
All right, so we have a, a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, co-counsel with attorney Rich Bowen. That was a productive meeting last week with Rich.
Yeah, I talked to Rich today. Um, he was going to try to come in Wednesday and talk to some people, but it turns out Tara has a conflict, two conflicts, so she can't be here. So I think we're going to have to postpone until after the 4th.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, really, he wants to get a little more clarity and I was kind of saying, you know, how do we go forward in terms of a KP relationship? And I know Lauren and Gregor, yeah, they want to come in.
To meet with us.
Have we got a date?
Uh, no, I wanted to wait until we talked tonight. I've got a meeting Wednesday. I don't know if you guys are free on Thursday or if you guys want to do something during the day with them, just the two of you? Or if you want to hold off until after the 4th of July and all of us meet with them in the evening?
I'm out of town, I'm out of town later this week. I could, unless I called in. I, I do look forward to having a discussion with them. I, I am feeling a little uncomfortable that we'd be careful not to burn too many bridges here.
Right, I agree.
And I, I, yeah, I, um, um, I, I have some concerns there, so I look forward to that meeting, but, um, hard for me this week.
Certainly after the 4th.
Okay, so, um, something the week of the 10th then?
Sure.
What is, what does your schedule look like? We just have a meeting on the 10th? Do you want to try a meeting with them Monday night?
Sure.
Maybe at, um, like 5:15? That's probably the earliest I could be here and meet with them before our meeting?
You don't want to postpone the meeting?
Um, yeah, I mean, we could. We could.
Why don't we leave it that as, we could go as early as 5:15 and then whatever's convenient for them, they may need more time to get down through traffic.
Okay.
It's not executive session in any case.
No, it wouldn't be executive session. But, um, I don't know if this is something that, um, that they'd want to talk about at a Monday night meeting, but, you know, we...
Whatever.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, um, we'll start with the 10th. Do you have any other availability if that doesn't work for them?
I'm pretty free, so you can tell me.
I'm, I'm free every other night except Thursday of that week, the 13th.
All right, so we'll start with the 10th as our first option and the 11th and the 12th as, um, uh, backups.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is to meet with KP?
This is to meet with KP, just KP.
Just KP.
Just KP. And then we'll, and maybe then the other night, we'll meet with Rich. If we, you know, we've got both of these days available and Rich is available, we could do that. Okay.
Montello's due.
Okay, yeah, we've got Jim doing Montello on, um, the 10th. Okay, um, do we have, do we want to hold off on the appointments until after? That's quite a process, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you didn't, did you want to go through every appointment?
Well, we were going to make appointments that, uh, whatever's left for the annual appointments.
Um, there were three or four correspondents.
There's just a couple?
Yeah, there's just a few.
Because we made...
Correspondence, the other ones?
Yeah.
You did ask for the list
Okay.
the way that John worded it.
Right.
So that...
So we're all set with that? Okay.
Yeah, good.
All right, so then why don't we make these the last of the appointments? Okay.
One thing before we leave, kind of the legal area.
Okay.
A while back, we had a firefighter who was over 65. And we clarified with legal that he could no longer work in that environment. He could be administrative. So now we have a person who is over 65 that's in EMS. And I went back and read David Jenkins' letter and it was specifically about firefighting. So the question has, comes up, does that person have to automatically retire because they're over 65? So I would like to ask Jenkins, just clarify that for us, yes or no?
That's a good question. I know it is with firefighters, but I don't know about EMS.
He didn't talk about EMS at all in the, in the letter that he gave us back. So would you approve?
Sure. All right, I'll make a motion that John contact David Jenkins and get a clarification about retirement as it applies to EMS.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
What about old selecting?
No, they keep coming back. We recycle.
Bad pennies.
Okay, so we're going to make the appointments and then
Yeah.
have our presentation?
Okay, so Cheryl Brown, um, to counsel on aging, um, for an indefinite term as, uh, senior transporter volunteer. Uh, she's been recommended by the COA director, um, has signed waivers for the town and has had a query check and...
Okay.
And she, excuse me, she will be getting paid from O'Carney.
Okay. Oh, that makes sense, yes.
So she'll get paid, um, I think it's 53 cents a mile.
Okay.
But she was going to be using the van, so we thought to put her on and she'll take people to Red Evans and things like that. She volunteered to do that.
Okay, excellent. All right, I'll second.
Uh...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next one is Bob Carling to Fence Viewer, um, until June 30th, 2018. I want this job someday.
Someday, someday, but not today.
You have to earn it.
All right, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next one is Richard Stover, historic district commission member until the end of June 19.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
Uh, aye.
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 Okay. And, uh, Mark Gabriel to zoning board of appeals, the second and alternate until June, end of June of 18.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, thank you. All right, so that's all the appointments.
Pass those along and we got right to 7 o'clock.
Excellent, all right. Welcome.
Come on up if you'd like. Our plush table here.
Do you want me to move the microphone?
Yeah, well, I think they're going to want you to talk at the microphone to catch you on the camera.
And let me just say at the outset that, uh, sitting over there and having you do the annual appointments, if someone had said to me, you're going to be before the Board of Selectmen, the last meeting in June, I would have known right off. Many, many 30-some-odd years of municipal government, uh, I know exactly what goes on in the last meeting in June. I bet the last meeting was a meeting in December, you do all your liquor licenses too, so. Uh, thanks for having me. Um, I guess I'm here to talk about your search for a town administrator, talk about my own, about me, about, uh, my firm and, uh, how I would go about working with you on a search of this sort. Uh, I think I sent on a, uh, basic proposal of services. Uh, by way of explanation, my name is Bernie Lynch and I'm joined with Sharon Flaherty of Community Paradigm Associates, a firm that I formed in 2014 when I left the city of Lowell. I was Lowell city manager for eight years, uh, which doesn't seem like a long time, but it was the city of Lowell. Which actually is, uh, you have to go back to the 1950s to find a manager that lasted as long as I did. So on top of the substance of the, uh, changes we made in the city, I'm also very proud of the fact that I had some longevity while I was there. Prior to that, I was the, uh, town manager in the town of Chelmsford for 20 years. And what's interesting about my experience in the town of Chelmsford and how it relates, I think, to the town of Plimpton is I was in fact the first town manager that the town of Chelmsford had. They had an executive secretary before that. I served in that role. And then the, um, town adopted a charter, uh, which is different certainly from Plimpton, but it was establishing, uh, a new position. Uh, and so I, I had the opportunity to serve in that role for, as I say, for 20 years. Uh, as I said, in 2014, when I left Lowell, uh, I left for a variety of reasons, primary, which was that I was interested in doing some different types of projects. Uh, I felt like I had accomplished much of what I wanted to do there. Uh, and I was interested in doing some public consulting, doing some, uh, work with, um, some nonprofit entities and doing some interesting work, uh, doing some government relations work. Uh, in fact, I worked with a company that, uh, I believe, I know, uh, you are involved with, and that's Colonial Power Group, uh, municipal aggregation. Uh, so I do governmental relations with them. Uh, they contacted me soon after I left Lowell, well, I should say soon after I left Lowell, about a year and a half after I left Lowell and said, you know, we understand energy, but we don't understand municipal government. Uh, and so I started working with them to, um, sort of work on how they could roll out that product. But mostly what I was interested in is working with different communities on their public management projects, uh, and working with communities on doing recruiting for very hard-to-fill positions. It's a very competitive market right now for municipal managers, uh, for a number of municipal, uh, positions. And I felt that during my time, uh, 30-some-odd years of working municipal government, I'd done a good job of building good teams, finding good people. And, um, I was interested in carrying that forward to, uh, other municipalities. So, um, I, uh, had the opportunity, I was contacted by the State Department of Revenue back in 2015 to, um, fill in for the town manager position out in Winchandon. Uh, Winchandon is a small town of about 10,000, 11,000 people, uh, experiencing, at the time, experiencing some very difficult financial circumstances. They have $3 million in the red, uh, at the end of the fiscal year as a result of some, uh, decisions that had been made in that community. Uh, so I was asked to go out there and fill in and sort of, um, calm the waters, if it, as it were, uh, in terms of their finances. Uh, and they were also looking for a town manager to replace the town manager who had been removed. And, um, so they approached me about doing that search and I, uh, took advantage of the opportunity to, under a separate contract beyond the interim work I was doing, to conduct that search. Very difficult position to fill because of the financial condition of that town and also the, uh, the geography of that area. Uh, frankly, it's very difficult to find people to fill positions in northern Western County. Uh, we were able, I was able to fill that slot. It's been very successful. In fact, so successful that the Department of Revenue has now asked the individual who I recruited to serve simultaneously, though they've been working with the town of Winchandon, to have that individual serve, uh, as the town administrator in the neighboring community as well. Uh, so we got a very good candidate who's done an excellent job in Winchandon and is now looking to do some work for some other community, uh, another community next door. Uh, I was then contacted by the town of Amherst. They were looking to fill that, their town manager position. I was able to, uh, work with the town of Amherst in filling that. It was a challenging position to fill because of its, um, its location, somewhat isolated. It's a beautiful town. I'm sure people have been to Amherst, but, uh, what was also challenging about that though is they were looking at, uh, changing their form of government, potentially moving away from a town manager and going to a mayor. Uh, so that was scaring off a number of people for that position. Um, but I was able to fill that slot as well. I've got a good town manager there and they're now looking at actually still changing their form of government, uh, but instead of, uh, going to mayor, they want to strengthen the position of, uh, the manager within the community, uh, or, uh, or solidify it more. Uh, so, uh, then the town of Wellesley, uh, reached out to me and asked me to submit a proposal to them. Uh, again, a challenging position because they just looked at their, changing their form of government. And, um, the, um, what had happened there is they looked to move to a town manager. They don't actually have a manager in the town of Wellesley. They have what's known as the executive director. Uh, it's a very decentralized form of government. Um, and managers tend to like to go to manager communities. Uh, and this scared a number of people off that they didn't make that, uh, make that that they didn't make that, uh, make that move. But again, we were very successful in getting a good number of applicants and, uh, a good finalist, a couple of good finalists, uh, won the selection that the Board of Selectmen made there. And, uh, I just recently completed the town of Shrewsbury, uh, replacing, um, the Manager there who's leaving after twenty years, um, and his successor, he'd been there for thirty years. Uh, excuse me, forty years. So, um, again, it's somewhat a challenging position to fill because you'd be replacing someone who'd been there for such a long period of time. But, again, found a, uh, an excellent choice, um, in a, uh, in that, from that region of the state, but, uh, we had a number of very good candidates. Um, doing some other searches right now, but they haven't, uh, recruited for a, um, Regional Planning Agency up in the Merrimack Valley, um, doing the, if you look at the Beacon today, they put out the Massport Community Advisory Committee, uh, is looking for an Executive Director. I did, uh, working on that search. I'm also working with the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, and I've done some smaller searches as well. And that's on top of the public management consulting work that I've been doing with a number of communities. So, uh, I know municipal government, uh, it's what I've done for my entire career. Uh, I know what Boards of Selectmen do, I know what Town Administrators do, I know what Selectmen like to see in an Administrator, uh, and what Administrators like to see in Selectmen. In every community is different, with the way the Selectmen operate, with what, and what Administrators are looking for with particular communities. And I like to think that I can put those together and find the right candidate for the town that is looking for someone. Uh, because there are going to be differences, but I understand the roles and responsibilities fully, having served in the position and worked with municipalities across the Commonwealth. In addition to that, perhaps tied to that, is, uh, I have a very extensive network of people. I've been in the business for thirty-five years. I'm still an active member of the International City and County Managers Association, and I'm still a very active member of the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association. In fact, I'm currently working with them, uh, on a pro bono consulting basis to do their strategic plan. So I know all the Managers in the state, I know all of the Administrators in the state, uh, and, um, many of the assistants for those communities as well, which would probably be the market, I would think, that you'd be looking at. And, um, in addition to that, I also serve as a Senior Fellow at Suffolk University, uh, in the Public Management Program, coordinating the Local Government Certificate Program with Suffolk University and the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which has given me an opportunity to, um, know, uh, get to know, uh, sort of the new generation of Municipal Managers, Managers that are coming out. So I bring, I think I bring a good knowledge of municipal government, uh, and I think I bring an extensive network of people, and, uh, I know how the process works, I know how to market the position. The proposal I've given you, essentially, I won't, uh, read through it or walk through the entire thing perhaps, but, uh, just, uh, hitting on some high points. You know, the first step in the process is really, um, determining what your needs are and what your wants are from this individual. Uh, this is your first Town Administrator, understanding, uh, and you're working on the job description now. And so certainly I'd be able to, to assist you in that process. We need to figure out, though, what type, what are the issues facing the town of Plimpton? What are the, uh, qualities that you're looking for from the individual? From that, we develop a position profile, uh, that is used really as a marketing tool to market the town of Plimpton to candidates. Couple of different options on that. For, I will tell you that for Wellesley and Amherst and Shrewsbury, you have a very comprehensive position profile, and I've actually brought a copy of that tonight that I can, I think I only brought one copy, though, that I can leave you. That's a, as I say, that's a very comprehensive document, I don't think you necessarily need something that elaborate, uh, but you need the, the, the basics that's in that position profile, that, uh, would identify for candidates, um, what type of town of Plimpton is and what type of person they're looking, that you're looking for. Work with the, uh, Board and, uh, Screening Committee, I believe you have a Screening Committee set up, uh, to, uh, work on the, the process that we would use moving forward. Uh, advertise in the, uh, MMA Beacon, advertise in the, um, International City and County Managers Association, uh, ICMA. I don't think you necessarily would be looking out of state, uh, but there are members here in Massachusetts that may see, there are people that see something in ICMA that, uh, they may not see in the Beacon. Uh, or they may be in Rhode Island, uh, or Connecticut, and might be looking to, or they may be family members from Plimpton who have, or people in Plimpton have family members, uh, out in the other, in other parts of the country that would see the ICMA. So it's a, it's a good investment of a few hundred dollars to advertise in that way. But, you know, if it's, it was just a matter of putting it out in the paper, uh, very simply, you could do that yourself. I think what I bring is, uh, on top of working with you to develop that profile, uh, and the, the job description and the process is to, uh, really do active recruiting. And, uh, so I would, I would be out there looking for people to, that would apply for the position. And then I would work with the Screening Committee on, I will, I would receive all the resumes, narrow them down, bring you in my recommendations of the seven to nine people that should be interviewed, uh, and then, uh, work with the Screening Committee to go through the interview process, helping with the questions, helping with the, uh, decision-making. There are times that there are questions, what I've, what I've seen is there are times that questions come up from Screening Committee members or from Selectmen that are wondering about a particular candidate or about, uh, particular issues that come up during the interview that, given my familiarity with municipal government, my familiarity with the, with the profession, uh, I can address those questions and provide the answers. After the Screening Committee makes their, after they conduct their interviews and make their selection of the three to five finalists that could be brought onto the Board, uh, I would do the reference checks, uh, at that time to determine whether we have qualified, quality candidates, uh, with nothing in their past and the right qualities that we, that we want. And then, once those are done, work with, uh, with the Screening Committee to actually present those to the Board for the final interviews. And I would work with the Board through the final interview process. Couple of optional features that I've, that I can offer in addition to the more elaborate profile, which, again, I don't think you necessarily need. Another part of the process that I've been, um, I think I, I, I do well is working with the community, uh, in terms of identifying the community's interests in the type of person that's hired, and then also working with the community and staff members who evaluate the finalists, if you want to include that within the, the process. Some communities do, some, um, don't necessarily, or they, they, they do it in different forms, so we can, we can discuss that. And then lastly, um, once the selection is made, the other optional service that I can provide is, uh, helping you negotiate a new contract with the individual, particularly where this would be the first one. I heard you mentioned KP Law, they're your, I don't recall whether they're your counsel or not. Uh, they're certainly well-versed, and, um, whoever you use as Town Counsel can, can work on that as well. But, uh, from the perspective of being a Manager in the past, I can provide some assistance with that as well. So, uh, that's, uh, that's the, the process in a nutshell, that's me. And, um, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to start, Mark?
So, I, you mentioned, uh, the, the optional part, working with the community and staff, um, for buy-in, essentially. What's that entail?
Well, it's, there's a couple of different things. First off, there's, there's two parts of the community. One is the, the part that I would, um, that would really be included. When you're doing the identification of the type of person you want, at the preliminary stage, right, the information gathering stage, if you wanted to have, uh, me meet with your Department Heads to get some feedback from them, if you wanted me to meet with, uh, have a, to hold a community meeting, to have the public, uh, and have me facilitate that discussion, uh, I did that. Uh, I've done that in every community that I've done a search. And, uh, either by myself or with Board Members or with the Screening Committee. So that's, that's basic, that's part of the basic scope of services. The, um, the additional part is, depending upon, uh, when you get to the selection phase, when you get to the finalists, uh, in the town of Amherst, uh, Amherst is very, um, civically engaged. Uh, and what we did there is we had a, um, we had three finalists. Each finalist spent the day in Amherst, beginning with a, uh, meeting with the, with the Board, a, mm, meeting with some of the Department Heads, a tour of the town, a meeting with some of the business leaders, uh, a, more meetings with staff, uh, a facilitated community discussion that I facilitated. Then we sent them back to rest, and then they had their full interview before the Board. So they went from eight-thirty in the morning till about ten at night, uh, with just a short amount of time in between. Uh, in the town of Wellesley, uh, we had both, we had two finalists, and they both came in, and they were operating under, um, two different schedules, uh, but we had them go off and spend the day in the town, and then, uh, again, facilitated discussions with the community before they went and had their interviews with the Board of Selectmen. Shrewsbury, we just had a meet and greet that, uh, again, that I facilitated, so. So, this, we can, we can sort of talk about that if you, if you're interested in that type of.
So, one other question for me, so I suppose all towns thinks that, all towns think they're unique, and probably they are, but probably less unique than they think they are. Though we think we're pretty unique, we're small, um, we're relatively, uh, poor. This will be a new position, we haven't had a Town Manager. So, is thinking outside the box in terms of the kind of candidates we might look for? I know you're familiar with established Managers and the like.
Sure.
Does your connection or network include, you know, the potential of, of someone else or that the uniqueness of this situation might appeal to them?
Well, my network is, uh, Managers, Administrators, uh, some other, um, municipal officials. I, myself, in the past, in my, in my own hiring decisions, have hired people, uh, from the military. Uh, I've hired people from, um, the, the nonprofit sector, from the, from industry, uh, in, in filling positions. Uh, I don't think there's a, um, I don't think there's a, there's any magical formula necessarily to have someone with municipal experience. I do think it helps, particularly where it's the first position, I will say that. Uh, I think it's important because, um, I, I'm doing a project right now in another community, not a recruitment, and, um, some of the questions that have, remember raised to me, uh, from someone who hasn't worked in municipal, has never really worked in municipal government, just recently appointed to a, um, volunteer board, and he just kind, he's having very, very diff, uh, great difficulty in getting his arms around, his hands around, how municipal government operates, the laws that have to be followed, the notion of public records, the notions of open meetings, um, labor contracts. It's helpful to have that type of understanding.
Thanks.
How would you describe your role in the process? You guiding us, or are you really, um, doing most of the work and, and we're just kind of along for the ride?
I can do whatever you want. Uh, I would say, I'd say more guiding for, uh, through, through the process. This is, you know, you have to live with the person who's selected. Uh, I wouldn't feel comfortable finding someone and putting them in the position. I'm very comfortable narrowing the search, and I've done that both ways. I've done it where I narrow the search down to seven people, nine people, that I hand over to a Screening Committee and say, "These are the people that I've selected for you to interview", because the town wanted me to do it that way. Uh, I've also handed over, um, forty resumes and said, or fifty resumes, and said, "You choose the ones you want to interview." It takes more time that way. Generally speaking, the same people that I cho, would have chosen, were chosen to be the final, the semifinalists. But I see myself more as a, as a guide to you, uh, a guide, a resource, and someone who will, I will tell you what I think, when I feel it's appropriate. But, again, I, you know, I've, I've been put in that position of, "Tell us what you, what, what we should do." I'll give you my advice, but I won't tell you what to do, because, again, um, I live right next door in Plymouth, but this is Plimpton. Uh, this is your town, and I, I'm a resource for you. But I'll be happy to give you as much help as I can.
Okay. What's, um, of the placements that you've been involved with, have they all been retained for long periods of time, uh, not a lot of turnover, are these people that are?
Well, I'm happy to say that they've all been retained, but, but keep in mind, uh, I've been in the business now for three years. But, the, the, uh, position I filled, uh, furthest back is that town of Winchandon, and again, they're very pleased, they've, uh, renewed that individual, he's thrilled, and as I said, he's now being asked to, and they're buying into the notion of regionalizing that service as another community. So, uh, yeah, and, you know, you can call Amherst, Wellesley, Shrewsbury, they were all very pleased. And, uh, I'd certainly urge you to call the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, uh, all very pleased with the, the services I provided and the choices that were made.
Excellent. John, do you have questions?
Yeah, a couple. Just reading this down. Uh, what happens if, uh, the person doesn't work out, say, three months? Do you make any sort of commitment in terms of helping us?
I, I would come back and help, yes. We'd go through that process again, but I would hope that they'd last three months. But I hope they'd last a year, so anything under, anything, um, as long as you don't chase the person out. But if it didn't work out, um, for, you know, during that first year, I would come back and work with you on finding somebody else.
We haven't really, um, we've talked about a Screening Committee, but we're, we're also looking for help in the process of how that would work in terms of, uh, since it's a new Administrator or a new Manager, how to, unnecessarily buy-in, but we want to make sure everybody, the Department Heads, the Boards and Commissions, especially since we're an all-volunteer town, that they buy into this so that this works from day one. How, how would you help us with that process?
Well, again, I think that, uh, I, I think I would, uh, play a role in helping, um, facilitate those discussions, and that's where I think it would be very helpful upfront to have those discussions. We could have a, uh, a meeting of, I guess, I, I'd want to sit down and give it a little bit of thought, but also talk to you some more about that, about some different ideas. But, um, I can envision having, um, a media, you know, a large-scale meeting where we talk about all that or with Representatives from the various Boards and Department Heads. Maybe two separate meetings, one with Department Heads and one with, um, some of the Volunteers. Again, I'm not quite sure right now how I would go about doing that. Uh, but I, again, I know municipal government, I hate to keep on coming back to that. I teach municipal government. I've represented the Municipal Association, uh, the Managers Association, uh, working with communities on their forms of government. I've been asked to go out and speak, uh, to a number of communities about their forms of government. Uh, I've written a charter for the town of Southampton. So, I know how it's supposed to work and what the values are of the way a professional position can benefit a community, uh, but I think it's important to point out that a professional Manager really has to be guided by the, they manage, they administer, but it's the, they manage or administer the policies and goals of the governing body, and that's the Board of Selectmen. There's also, I think it's important for Department Heads that might be nervous about that in some way. Some Department Heads might be thrilled, but there may be some nervousness that someone's going to come in and tell them how to do their job. There is going to be oversight, that's one of the reasons you, you wanted Administrators, to have some oversight. But any Administrator, um, certainly one that I would recommend to you, uh, needs to recognize or would recognize that, uh, you know, we're not, you know, Managers, Administrators. They're expert at doing that, they're not experts at being Police Chiefs or Fire Chiefs, or DPW Directors. Sometimes we like to play them. Uh, I certainly designed a few traffic intersections in my time. That didn't mean that they were actually implemented, but I tried to design them because I thought that would be something that would work. But I, we did, I did it jointly with my DPW Director, my traffic people. But I relied upon their, their expertise and their, uh, their knowledge. And I think that's what any Administrator is going to do as well.
We don't have any support structure for this person, basically. This person coming in is a Department of One. Any ideas about one salary, uh, for a town our size, we're about twenty-nine-hundred people. We have, what, thirty-hour work weeks? Uh, this will be a full work week, but still, you know, the people out here on Fridays, they're here nine to two on the other day. Any insights on, you could give us on that?
Well, the salary, I think you're probably looking, uh, and I'd have to go and do a quick salary survey on, uh, you know, set, have, look at what the, the survey shows, but I would think probably somewhere in the ninety-thousand-dollar range. That's a guess. Again, I'd have to go back and look at what else is out there for this region. That might have some impact on the type of person we want to hire. Massachusetts is somewhat unique. I'm not saying that, and there've been some very good Managers that have come into Massachusetts from other states, but where this is the first Administrator, you, you might want some, someone who's more experienced. But I was going to say that one, one possibility would be if there was an Administrator that came from another state that you wanted to bring in, um, highly experienced, but maybe is already retired from another state. Very popular with some of the law enforcement people to become, leave a position in the state, move to another state or vice versa. But, uh, But, and no support staff at all in terms of administrative support?
Just us.
Okay.
Yeah. We're all here today.
Okay. All right. And that's, that's a challenge, a challenge coming in, because you need someone, if you're basically looking for the person to be a one-man, one-woman band, that's, that's a challenge. So you need to find a way to, I think we need to look at how we set that up and how we might be able to do some departmental sharing of personnel.
Yeah.
Any more?
Audience, go ahead.
Colleen or Nate, do you have questions?
Well, I came in a little late. I think I heard you say that you have three years' experience. You have a load of experience personally.
Mm-hmm.
You teach.
Mm-hmm.
But as a headhunter, for lack of a better term, you have three years' experience?
I have three years' experience as, being able to hang a shingle that says I'm a recruiter. I have thirty-five years' experience of hiring people. I've hired, during that period of time, I've hired or participated in the hiring of four town administrators, town managers, the executive, the executive director of the Reger Planning Agency that I mentioned. But here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, at last count, I think I have eleven people, eleven or twelve, that worked for me and are now municipal managers, that I hired as my assistants, or I hired as other assistant-type positions that are now municipal managers. I've also hired five police chiefs, three DPW directors, three fire chiefs, four fire chiefs. I, I have experience in hiring people.
And how large is your company? Is it basically-
It's Sharon and myself. I have an associate, the former town manager from Redding, who works on projects that I assign. I have the former comptroller for the city of Lawrence and the, she was the city auditor for the town, the city of Lowell. And I have two research assistants, one from Suffolk and one from Harvard.
And just, you mentioned the three candidates in Amherst-
Yes.
...that spent the day. Was this a collective day, the all three on the same day, or they each spent some of the same day?
Each spent the day. One of the finalists did withdraw after his day. We burnt him out. He withdrew. He was the, he was the town, city manager of Montpelier for one. He withdrew. So, but, no, I, I, in terms of the recruiting, I, I'm very proud of my, the people I've hired through the years, what they've been able to accomplish.
And just, why would Plimpton hire your company rather than a larger company that's been doing this for thirty years?
I don't know of any that have been doing it for thirty years that are out there right now. But, one, my network of people here in Massachusetts is unparalleled. There's no one that has a better network than I do. That's my opinion. But it's, again, I'm the only manager that's out there doing this with that network that, and has been doing it as long as I have. There's a, there's a retired manager from The Cape who used to do this, but he hasn't done it for about five years. There's some, there's some other companies, but they're, they are larger. They aren't necessarily tied in exclusively to Massachusetts. And I think you get more of a hands-on approach with me. And I work, frankly, I work, I can work pretty quickly. I just completed Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury and another community which I will not name, went out into the market for recruiter at the same time. Shrewsbury hired me. The other community was able to find a manager, a selected manager, two months after I had Shrewsbury's manager all signed in.
And then that actually brings up my final question is, how long do you see this process taking? We're starting this summer?
Summer's a tough time. Wellesley, just to give you an example, because it was just a year ago that I did Wellesley. And they started at roughly the same time and we had, ended it selected on November And she began on January second. Now, I don't think it necessarily has to take that long. We can try to expedite that if you, if you want. But it depends on what, what you want of the process. So, there's another community now that I'm talking to that is, wants to have someone on from mid-September. Can it be done? Won't be a brand-new position there, they know what the position is, you know, how it, how it will all work. But we'll just have to, if we do it, we'll have to sort of put the cart ahead of the horse on a couple of things. So it can be, it can be, I would say more reasonably, you could probably have it somewhat selected by early to mid-October. That's reasonable. I'm good.
Okay.
As you've heard my time.
Okay. All right. Any follow-up questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Anything? I have two.
Great. What, is there anything I can provide you at this time, other than-
We have references, right, in your packet?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So, I urge you to give them all a call. If they don't call you back, keep on calling them. So, all right?
Terrific. Well, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time and, and information.
All right, thank you.
All right, take care.
Thank you.
Bye. All right. So, back to the agenda. So we've got expiring contracts, follow-up, and review.
I don't, there's nothing in correspondence on that.
Do we have anything, Bree, of our list of contracts? I think Bree must have it.
Uh-oh, here comes another folder.
Oh, this is bigger. Our work is comp. I think everybody had the list, though, that was expiring.
Yeah.
We should have had that.
Uh-huh.
So... I don't have the school principal one.
You know, why don't you reach out to John Wilhamsen, see if they've negotiated that yet?
But we got-
Which one's that?
Principal, the Denet principal. Peter Benito?
School principal, six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Mayor, S Y I, John Scott, three weeks.
Three weeks? Okay, thank you. All right, let's reach out. Actually, the, yeah, Jason or the superintendent should know, because they're part of all those negotiations.
I can call, I'll call there then.
Thank you, Colleen.
Um, every private house. Oh, I didn't know. We did the extension on the Collins Group.
Right.
DNS hosting, got it. Maya, received it. Cook Insurance, got it. The solar projects, I don't know what was going on.
We're working on that.
Okay. Computers done. Edron's done. Social generator is completed. Pioneer Consulting Group.
Oh, that sounded familiar to you and you weren't sure why.
Remind me, what is it?
Pioneer Consulting Group.
Yeah, it only, that it, it sounded familiar from previous. I, I don't remember what it is.
We got a mystery.
Okay.
The copiers are done. V N A is done. Ford Motor Credit is completed. And I have something in here for assessors, valuation update vision. Is that what she said she was doing, is working on?
I'm not sure to tell you the truth.
Okay.
All right, so-
And did anybody hear about, from Plimpton Sandin-Graham?
No, nothing. So I would assume that that has expired and he's not going to renew.
Okay. Do you want me to do another follow-up? I'll call me up to you.
Could you?
Plimpton Sandin-Graham, did we talk to Jim Mulcahy?
I did. Well, I, I left him a, I sent him an email to see if he wanted to renew it. I never heard back.
Okay.
So, I'll try him again, too. Okay.
What's it? Call the other one for that?
Perfect. All right.
I have one issue.
Okay.
Unless everything's closed.
Well, we're not completely done, because we still need your correspondence. And why don't we go to Dale?
And are we going to go further on that?
The town administrator?
Yeah.
Are you gonna, do you want to call the references for Paradigm, so that you've been the one that's called all of them?
I'm glad to do that if we feel it's necessary. We should at least talk to one or two and find out.
Yeah, do you want to call a couple? And then-
Yeah, glad to do it.
Why don't we make a decision at our next meeting on the tenth?
Yeah, tenth. Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll put that on there, Bree, is that we'll make a decision on hiring a consultant to fill the town administrative position?
We should be ready then.
Seven-ten.
And that feels like that's the point, that we're getting deep enough in the summer, that we're getting past that, that we get to the more fruitful time to begin a search.
Okay.
So seven-ten?
Seven-ten.
You got any insight for us, Nate? I mean, you've sat through these. Anything? Nope?
Or do you want to wait till seven-ten?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's fine.
I did have your thing about your-
They're all very different.
They are all very different.
Yeah.
They are. We just have to decide what's best for us in Plimpton.
The, checking the other references, I mean, a clear theme came out, I think I mentioned that last time, and I guess maybe we'll just bring it up next time.
Yeah, perfect. Let's talk, yeah, you can report on your reference check on the next meeting, and then we'll go from there.
It was your screening committee. Are you going to be forming that?
Um, why don't we hold off until after we decide on a consultant, because they may have some insight on how to form a screening committee, what size, who should be in it? Okay.
Just put it in advance.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so on to Dale.
Just, basically, taking the bed on the way out the door. I've got, I've got the list. If I can spend some time with whoever, whoever's going to sit in on that computer after we, just to show you how it's set up, I mean, all the files are there, you know.
I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. So, John?
Mike, if you can join us, I know you're going to be out of town, but if you're around. I'm around tomorrow afternoon. After that, it'd be-
Yeah, tomorrow afternoon, once you stop me. Can you do that? I mean, it doesn't have to be afternoon, afternoon, it can be late morning or-
Okay.
I'm probably tied up until two.
Two?
Should we say two?
Okay.
I guess, I mean, we can use that as sort of an educational session, no deliberation.
No deliberation, right.
You're right with that?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Just so you know where, where stuff, you know, where stuff is.
Yeah, great, yeah.
I mean, we covered kind of the solar thing tonight and beyond that, there's, you know, the contracts, shouldn't be a-
So, we had talked when we met last about a document from you sort of tying up loose And we still have the laptop to deal with, I believe, returning that?
Yeah, just, well, I mean, I was going, the last day, you get that, you get the keys, you get, you get it all.
So that, that would be Thursday is your last day, right? I think I'm going to be out of town then, but you could just-
All right, John will meet with you on Thursday? Okay, perfect.
Doesn't matter, I'll just give it all to him.
Okay.
He has to be there.
And, all right, and again, though, we, we know about solar, we know we have the computer to look at, and we feel like other loose ends are pretty well tied up.
Yeah, pretty well tied up. We do a lot of stuff with insurance, Bree has a good handle on all of that stuff. The only extraordinary, not out of the ordinary stuff, is the pilot contract. And then there's the solar aggregation, but that's in the process, that's going to be-
Okay, so the solar aggregation in process, next step on that, we will hear from them?
Mm-hmm. I'll send them an email, just like I did for Colin.
That's the electricity aggregation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I actually started on that, I think, three years ago.
Yeah, they held the public hearings on that, and now it's just in that statutory time period where the Commonwealth goes over it, figures it all out, when it happens, they'll notify you. So-
Yeah, when we can put it out to bed, they'll notify us.
Yeah. And, and that's really essentially it. I mean, they, you know, there's no personnel oversight, so there's no, nothing really has to do with the day-to-day operations. And that's it.
Okay. All right. Do you want to jump into correspondence?
Do we have to?
Yeah. Quick.
Okay, then.
Quick, quick.
Quick, though?
Quick.
All right. This Columbia Gas requests, a couple of requests on excavation, one on twenty-eight Buttonwood Drive. I think these have been signed off by the Highway Surveyor.
Yes, he has approved all of them. Now we just need your approval.
Okay.
So, there's that one. There's also one for eleven Oak Street. The Highway Surveyor Supervisor made the request that would prefer no chance across the street if possible, and that's been documented in this.
Okay.
I guess I make a motion that we approve each of these excavation requests.
All right, I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
Mike, is there just two?
Two.
That's what I see, yes.
Okay.
Unless, oh, wait a minute. This one looks like, no, I'm, I guess there are a couple more in this packet.
Oh, boy, yeah.
So sorry. So another one from Columbia Gas, or NCAP transition remediation for fifteen Deborah Sampson Way, same things for ten Palmer. Again, all signed off for by the Highway Surveyor. So I make a motion both of those be approved as well.
I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
Let me just make sure there's not, I'm sorry, there are even more here.
Goodness, wow, we got quite a pack.
There's a lot.
Okay.
Fourteen Buttonwood Drive, install new gas service, and I guess these are duplicates, that's the same thing.
One twenty-eight and then one fourteen?
Yeah, she already did, we already did twenty-eight. That was the NCAP.
So we have fourteen Buttonwood Drive, eleven Oak, twenty-eight Buttonwood, fifteen Sam, Deborah Sampson, ten Palmer.
All right, I'll second.
Approval of all of those.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, okay.
Okay. So a letter from the Lieutenant Governor, actually addressed to me, welcoming me, congratulating me on reelection. The interesting piece on this is she reminds us that both Governor Baker and her, the Lieutenant Governor Karen Palito, were selectmen's once.
Interesting.
And they both fully understand what goes on up here, which is pretty cool.
Well, I think that's why they've come up with that community compact program.
Yeah, absolutely. This is a letter from Board of Health dated June twenty-second. Please sign and attach the forward to the next person. This is documentation about the Board of Health emergency plans and has to do with where emergency dispensing sites are in town. So this is merely various boards and committees approving that fact and being aware that all that information is on file, the Board of Health emergency plans at the Board of Health.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we sign these, this document.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
From, um-
What is today? Twenty-six?
Twenty-six. Catherine Holmes. She's a teacher at the Denet. It is sort of a public notice of a couple of programs going on in Denet Elementary Art Room, July tenth through the thirteenth, or seventeenth through the twentieth, Experimental Art Camp. The other one is same dates, tenth through thirteenth, seventeenth through twentieth, Slime Camp. Looks quite beautiful.
It is beautiful.
Lots of different colors and lots of slime. And it's a hundred and fifteen dollars per student. Looks pretty interesting. Visit the website, thepaintedcanvas.net to get more information.
Is it on our website?
No, I was going to get that, put on the website, and then I also wanted to know, I was going to send it to Debbie Anderson, to see if we could get it into the paper.
Yeah, very nice.
That'd be great.
And to see if Frig Goulat would put it on the-
Cable?
Cable.
Actually, boy, those would be pretty- Actually, boy, those would be pretty pictures if Deb can put that in the paper, the color.
It is beautiful.
Very nice. Board of Selectmen warrants, K&amp;P 6700, Verizon 182, last edition of Plimpton Express. Plimpton Selectmen consider co-council, co-council, town council. The last page, there's a picture of the Girl Scouts doing the community garden right out frontier.
Beautiful.
Very appreciated to the Girl Scouts and Karen Foy, who sets that up every year. It's a nice addition to this campus. It is in Plimpton, but the centerfold is quite beautiful. Mudfest and Halifax on Father's Day. We all missed it if we missed this one. This looks like too much fun. So maybe next year.
Mark your calendar.
Yeah, what's a little blurb paneer about Kathy, right?
Yes, from the front page.
On the front page?
Yeah, about the Mustangs, yeah. That's her, from the building department, her family.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, they have three Mustangs.
And then lastly, I received this, this is from National Grid, and they remind us if you're digging to call 811 yet. A big poster on safety in digging and what to do if one smells gas. The byline is "Smell Gas, Act Fast."
Thank you, Mark.
And it is with, it's with great pleasure that I report that complete correspondence.
Perfect. Okay, all right, let's do some minutes. We've got the 12th and the 19th. And then I think we are pretty much wrapped.
I had a couple things on the 12th.
All right, who wants to be the keeper for Bree? I had, oops.
I can be the keeper.
All right, you want to be the keeper? All right, what'd you have, Mark?
So on the second page, the bullet about Deb Anderson, and I'd like to fix up the next-to-last sentence there, presently reads, this is regarding Mr. Carling being appointed to the planning board, whether there was any conflict of interest with him being the zoning enforcement officer. It presently reads, this may be a conflict of interest in BO, Board of Selectmen wants to speak with town council. I would just word it, the Board of Selectmen would speak to town council to make sure there are no issues in the dual appointments.
I like that.
It just cleans up the language. And then there was just a typo down the page, Mr. Taran Toronto's name was a typo, which I'll point out.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June 12th as amended?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I'll get these tomorrow until you believe the final copy.
Okay, and then we've got the 19th.
This just came out, right?
I didn't see this.
No, she sent those out, you sent these out last week, didn't you, the 19th? I thought you did.
I, well, to put differently, either way, I have not reviewed this.
Okay, do you want to hold off until the 7, 7:10? Okay.
Yes, I thought you just wanted copies.
What? You did. Because you emailed them out, but I don't remember when.
Yeah, did you get the 12th? You had the 12th last week.
Yeah, I had the 12th, too.
We got the 12th. I'm not sure I got the 19th.
Okay, so we've, so we accepted the 12th as amended, and we'll hold the 19th until 7:10. So we'll have the 26th on, 7:10, and the 19th. All right, so dates to remember, we will be meeting on 7:10, 7:17, 7:24, 7:31. We're meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee August 3rd, I think it was.
Yeah, I think so.
At, I believe it was, what, 6:00 or 6:30?
6:30. No, they started at 6:30, so I think we were going to give them a half hour.
Okay, at 7:00. All right.
That's not till August.
That's not till August. You've got time.
Weekend, yeah.
Okay, and then we've got Townhouse Close on the 4th, and we've got Library First Saturday Coffee. What's that?
Every first Saturday, the library has a greet and meet. So that's at 10:30. Usually there is some sort of presentation. Past ones have been like the public safety presentation. Board Health, Kathy Drynan did one on ticks. So if you're around on the first Saturday at 10:30, it's a great time to come in and meet some friends.
Excellent. Okay, rants and raves. You want to go first?
We're going to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a three ladies rave, and didn't expect to have an audience. So volunteerism, it's really the foundation of what makes Plimpton work, whether it be volunteering for a board, a commission at the townhouse, or pays CASA, scouting, library activities, council on aging. Volunteerism is what makes Plimpton work. This May, we had three ladies step down from elected positions after a number of years of service. Finance Committee member Marilyn Brown, Finance Chairperson Susan Ossoff, and Select Women Chair Colleen Thompson. These ladies are the precification of what makes Plimpton work. All three put in long hours for no personal gain because of a love of the town. We've saluted them before, but I believe it needs underlining how much we appreciate their service and effort. Hopefully we can entice them back into service with the town after they have had a chance to decompress and re-endure. So thank you, Marilyn, Susan, and thank you, Colleen.
Here, here. Excellent. Very nice. My rave is thanking Dale for his service to the town and helping us, guiding us through the process, all the ins and outs of the challenges that we faced, and I am very appreciative of your help and wish you all the best in your retirement and happy fishing. And Mr. Russo?
So, two raves. One, the open house at 188 Main Street, right across from the Historical Society yesterday. They did a beautiful job on, it is gorgeous place, inside and out, and just as John talked about the volunteerism being an essential element in the town, I think conserving, perpetuating the old architecture, the old building, an equal part of that. So many thanks to the people that are doing those kind of renovations, saving the old architecture, which is just an integral part of the town.
Beautiful.
And then the second rave, which actually to wish the very best to Dale as well, and a couple of parting gifts for Dale. First of all, we have How to Retire Happy, Wild, and Free. Not sure if he's maybe all 30 of those already, but if not, he'll have that. The other book that's coming, oh, by the way, the author of this book is The Joy of Not Working, you know, whatever that is. The other book that's in the mail that'll be here tomorrow is 101 Fun Things to Do in Retirement: Irreverent, Outrageous, and Funny Guide to Life After Work. So those are both thought experiments on how Dale can be happy, wild, and free. Sir, thank you for your service. And there you go. We, I think after retirement, are going to share coffee and chocolate tart in celebration.
Thank you. All right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You just wanted to jump to that, all in favor?
I say happy birthday to my mom.
What?
I say happy birthday to my mom.
Yeah, you can say.
Happy birthday, Mom.
All right, good night, everyone. Happy 4th of July.